There are also people that didn't know about this building exists. And I think that we can change that. I believe the city deserves choices. And today, I'm standing here to create them with you guys. So I wanted to start with the proposal, the presentation. And if you guys look in your packets, I do, everyone do have a presentation as well. So this is the team, along with myself, Camille, which is the chief crew member, along with Damon, which is the crew member. What is our mission? Our mission, the purpose of this presentation is to provide you with the plan that will help build on the City of Glenard and Movement, City on a Move. Implement strong relationships with businesses in the area and help create a shift in each guest experience here at the Gold Room and the Community Center. Our mission is to create a space with not only superior customer service, but an inviting venue for all clients at the Gold Room. The staff's mission is to enhance the area's hidden gem and then invest in and attract more diverse traffic as well. What is our vision? Our vision is to establish ourselves as the premier venue in the Prince George's area. To achieve this, it will require the collective effort of everyone involved. The strategy will be developed in stages, which each quarter representing a distinct phase. The termination of each quarter will be determined by the needs of the city and the Gold Room. So what does this look like? We're going to address all the concerns of the Gold Room and the Community Center and the city. Implement a plan and design that connect to not only the Glenard and residents, but traffic outside of Glenard and area. Develop a strategy to maintain the existing policies and procedures and generate additional income in alternative sectors. So where does it start with? It starts with the people, the people of the City of Glenard and. And hearing out their concerns. And then we'll go to a plan, designing a plan around the, around the concerns that's provided to us through emails and surveys. And from that process, we're going to put together an action plan. And with that action plan, it's going to create clients that will turn into advocates that will actually bring in new revenue. So the Gold Rooms, the goals for the Gold Room. And we're looking at ourselves as the city you love, but the team that creates the yes. So communication will be a big part of that. Better products, and we're going to increase, the increase of revenue. What are some of our biggest threats and challenges? Some of our biggest threats and challenges includes upgrades, updated legal documentation, visibility, storage, and maintenance. So with the communication. Our objective is to transform the manner in which our audience engages with us. The means of communication will encompass and enhance email connections and online system, the creation of surveys to gather feedback from our clients, a strong presence on social media platforms, the implementation of updated rules and regulations, and the development of a more welcoming space and experience for our guests to relish. Additionally, we will present and fostering relationships with local mom and pop stores and businesses in the facility. So better products. The assortment of products will include upgraded ingredients for both locations and online presence through HoneyBook that will enhance the convenience for our patrons and renovations featuring new and improved contemporary or modern offerings. This will help us to remain competitive with other establishments in the facility, in the area. HoneyBook is an online system where they, you can actually send your clients the invoices, contracts, rental agreements, any type of reports that they have. So they can go on, we can send that over to them. And it's just a quick way of not just coming in here, that they'll, we'll be able to send that over to them. Yes, it is that. So you'll be able to, we'll have a link where they can go in and then schedule their appointments to come in. Yes. Revenue increase. There are several methods to enhance the revenue for our revenues. We can achieve this by offering a diverse range of event inventory, such as tables, chairs, linen, signage, and lighting options. Additionally, it is crucial to regularly maintain our facility and organize quarterly in-house events. These are just a few strategies among many others that can contribute to increasing revenue. So some of the revenue increases, inventory enhancement fees, in-house events, and then also the word of mouth, which is our advocates. Okay, so right now, I wanted to pause and then try to go over the rules and regulations. I did want it to start with the Community Center first, if that was okay. Yes, and we'll also go over the one-year plan that I have for both locations as well. So right now, I just wanted to jump down because hours, locations, inquiries, site tours, and renovations, I think is self-explanatory. Unless you guys wanted to go over that. That I just wanted to jump to the type of events, which is on the second page. So events held at the Glenard and Community Center at Woodmore Town Center will be meetings and repasses, 60 guests and under. The usage. So the usage will be Monday through Saturday, 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. These are some of the, the, these were the times that were already in place already. So I just adopted it over to these rules and regulations. The capacity will still remain the same. We did add on equipment, which we had already started renting, purchasing. So they will, anyone that will rent over at this Community Center will have access to rent these options as well. So we are looking to expand our inventory, which will actually, will have, will try to run out, purchase the bars and the chairs that's presented here today, and then the furniture and stuff that you see today. So that's in addition. I just wanted to give you some type of visual perspective of like what a package will actually look like if we wanted to do that as an upgrade. These are items that's ready right now. So the tables are, but the cocktail tables and some of these other items will be an additional cost. Yes. Correct, along with the, so if we, and that will depend on if once we, what type of chairs that we get, and that will be an additional, enhancement fit. The brown, the standard brown. Yep, so that will be the standard, and then you'll have the option to do an upgrade. So we will try to, right now, we have the 80 chairs over there. But we'll, if they wanted to substitute that, then they'll get, you know, they'll have another option. Yes.
That's fine. So I will ask that council will please speak in the mic. So that if there are citizens online that they can hear you, because although we hear you, citizens online who are witnessing cannot.
If renters want to bring their own items in, is there a charge for them to do that?
No.
Okay, even if we have to remove the standard items that are in there, we're not going to charge them for that?
I mean, that's something we can think about doing. I'm not suggesting that you would. But right now, no. Okay. External equipment. Delivery and pickup of rental, rented equipment and related items to be used by renters must be completed within the rental period. Again, all of this is self-explanatory, the setup and breakdown. Everything needs to be done, but within the 30, 30 days prior. However, depending on once they, once they sign their rental agreement, I would definitely need something ahead of time, you know. And then we are implementing any changes the day of, there will be a fee assessed for that. I do want to jump down to catering, which is the most important thing. Right now, there is, I've been, well, with the landlord on, over there, there was some miscommunication in reference to no music and just, it just being strictly meetings. So this is one of the reasons why some of the, we had to switch it over until we can further do some further investigations of what we actually need to do over there. But right now, we wanted to just keep it just strictly to meetings and repasses. Also, with the food, if anyone is bringing in food, that is an iffy situation. So we wanted to make sure that all clients, they have a certificate of insurance, just in case if something happens, that we'll have that. And then the liability waiver form is signed, you know, just in case, to take us off of, from any type of liability purposes.
Okay, can we go back to a second about the conversation? Are you talking about with Urban Edge? You had the conversation about the permissible, the permitted uses for that room?
I don't know if it's Urban Edge, that or not, but the landlord over at the Woodmore Town Center, the Community Center? Yes, Linda Snyder? Liz Snyder, yes.
Okay.
I was told there's no music, it's only strictly meetings for council members. So until, my concern is just to actually just pause on parties or whatever that's been hap, that's been going on, and to only do meetings and repasses until we can try to figure out something later.
Okay, and then for the catering, is there an option for citizens to sign just a liability waiver if they don't have a caterer that has a certificate of insurance? Because given how that room has been used historically for like baby showers or things like that, it may be people, you know, cooking food. The cost of the room itself lends itself to an event that's not supposed to be expensive. So having a caterer could really add into that cost. But if we had the option for the renters to, you know, I'm not sure what the proper term is, but basically absolve the city from any liability due to the food that they bring in.
So that's what I was saying. So they can bring in, let's say like a Sardi's or something like that. However, they're still, if they're bringing in food, we still want them to be, if something happened, you know, with they, they're cooked, like, you know, the shaver dishes or whatever, something happened, God knows, whatever, then we still have a certificate of insurance, but they can do a one-day insurance thing on Event Helper. So they, the, the client itself can actually get a one-day insurance policy, and it won't come through the client, don't come through the caterer.
Yeah, because I guess what more what I'm getting at is I'm cooking food in my house and bringing it over. We're saying that's not permissible at all. Even with them signing a waiver?
I wouldn't. So we want to jump down. And then these are, and I also included, like what was, need to be included in what they need to sign off. So the signed client usage agreement form, which is also in, stated in here, the signed liability waiver form, and then their certificate of insurance, which will need to be signed as well. Let's go to the prices. And that's actually on the last page. So the max time for, just to rent the room is four hours, 30 minutes to set up, 30 minutes to break down. The security deposit, which will be $200, and then the usage fee will be $100. For repass services, they will actually have an hour to set up and then an hour to break down, but the fees will remain the same. And then I also included upgraded rentals, add-ons, violation fees, and then decor, like if any damages, damage fees on here. And that's with the Community Center.
Sorry, I'm sorry to harp on this, but I just want to make sure, because I know you're going to be looking for our support on this. And I'm just having a really hard time with understanding a community room that is $100. Now, we're going to ask people to get a certificate of insurance for $1 million. That, it just doesn't match up, particularly with how that space is used and who our primary audience is for using that. So I do want us to think about what we can, what other alternatives we can explore for people to be able to bring in food that is not necessarily catered. And I'm also curious even how this applies to, you know, bringing in refreshments. Like what if I went into Wegmans to get a tray of sandwiches? Do I now have to get a certificate of insurance? Like when do you need to have that? And again, it just really is, I think, going to be a prohibitive requirement for our residents to use that space.
Well, again, I don't, I don't have all the answers. Again, this is something, this is just the first step, right? But again, I do, from events that we, I've seen in the past in reference to people staying over, people leave, is damage, you know, in, you know, leaving damages and $50 just for the rental fee is not covering.
I get that part.
Everything.
I get that part.
As far as the food, I can, we can re, you know, look at that again to see what will work best over at the Community Center. I do, however, think that we need something in place just in case if something happens, you know, you know, we can have something on, you know, for, on our behalf.
Yeah, I'm thinking something like, I'm bringing in my own food. I assume all the risk, the City of Glenard and will not have any risk, something like that where they can sign and, you know, absolve us of that liability, but also not require them to get a million dollars worth of insurance.
Okay, so also, we just have to think about any type of like fires or anything like that? Just, just the worst-case scenario type of thing as well too.
Okay, thank you.
My understanding is with the catering and with the food, if you go to a place that has a certified kitchen that the county has already deemed that the kitchen is, because a lot of people use these different kitchens across the county that are, have already been certified by the county to say that, you know, it's okay to cook food there or prepare food there, that the temperature is right, they have the right facilities and everything. Like she mentioned Sardi's, if you go to Sardi's and buy some food or go to Wegmans, we know that they're using certified kitchens. But for somebody to cook food in their home and to bring it to a facility, that's what the county, when you read there, the Health Department, the COBA rules, that's what the county and the state of Maryland is against.
Yeah, I can, I can see that as well. But I guess what I'm saying is that the use of that space, we're talking about 50 people or less, that's not the same as the Gold Room, right? Where it's an event, perhaps a wedding or, you know, something. This might just be a meeting, right? This might be, I don't know, the Women's Association wanting to get together and bring food to meet over food. Somebody fries some chicken in their house, you know, like, and just is bringing it. That would seem to me to be typical uses for that space versus the Gold Room, which is more of a formal, perhaps, event that is being used where a caterer would be something that is more likely to be utilized. So I just want to make sure that we're kind of matching up the requirements for services with the typical uses of the space, particularly if we're saying we're only limiting it to meetings and repasses.
To be honest, I don't think that it really matters of like what type of event it is. It's just a matter of.
It being a public venue.
Yeah, the liability cost, like on us as a venue, just making sure that we're good on our end.
It was my understanding that this originally, that room was to be used for citizens, but I see here you have, you're saying rental rate, it wasn't supposed to be rented out. I do agree with the increase from 50 to $100 because probably just for them going in there cleaning it up, doesn't even pay for their hourly wages. But that is a concern, but then I don't know about the security deposit. That's questionable as well, because again, that wasn't, that particular facility wasn't intended for creating any revenue or anything rental, it just was a courtesy.
So that's, that's the concern that I'm coming up with. And that's why I just did it for just maybe possibly meetings, because, you know, a party can turn into something where it's more risk rather than a meeting is concerned, you know, as far as damages is concerned. You know, and staying over, overtime, those are some of the biggest concerns that we had over there. And then just trying to recoup a war at the end of the day, and we only got $50. It wasn't anything there.
I noticed that also, listen, so you do not provide the paper tablecloths anymore?
No. They either have that option to purchase the tablecloths from us, well, not the linen from us, or they can bring something in.
We're good?
I have a quick question. Ms. Bun, when you just mentioned like when people would stay over, is there a late fee penalty, like?
It wasn't anything in place.
Okay, are we saying that there's one now or no? There is, I can't see, I don't have my glasses. Okay, I see down there. Okay, thank you.
And so when they do sign the rental agreement, they will sign them the master usage agreement sheet, which is in your file as well. And then that will have all of the, you know, the rules and regulations on there.
With this venue, what type of persons do you see renting this space? I mean, is there a pattern of certain types? Is it always baby showers? Is it always repasses?
I haven't had, well, the majority of them are like baby showers. But again, if the confliction with, you know, only supposed to be meetings, you know, no music, the setup time instead of breakdown time, what party need, you know, if you're having a party, the setup time doesn't, it's not going to be right. And then if you're only charging $50, just for 50, you know, it doesn't match up. The pricing that we're charging them and then the setup times, it's not, it's not matching up.
All right, thank you.
When they choose to, not rent, but use the room, are they aware that they're not supposed to have music?
Yes.
And has it been found that they do it anyway, or they comply?
Well, I, from, and Camille, you can jump in, because Camille normally handles most of the events over there. But from, from what I know, that they comply with the music. You know, we do get some, some setback a little bit when they do on the rental agreement. It was like, okay, well, this is what we did back, you know, a long time ago. But I did, you know, I do inform them that this, this is what it is right now.
I think we can afford to be a little bit more clear and specific about what we mean by no music. And I don't know if this is a change, but I've rented that space a lot of times. And what I've been told is that it's no sort of amplified music. So I, you can't have a DJ, you can't have speakers. But I've done things like with the Moms Group, we decorated Christmas ornaments. And we played music from, you know, our playlist on the phone, you know. So it's, are we really saying like there's no music? Or are we saying there's no DJ? I mean, even Old Navy has music playing, Wegmans has music playing in the aisles, so.
Even with the old rules and regulations, it states no music. Again, that's something that we probably need to just come back to, speak with the landlords, look at the contract to see exactly what we can do over there.
Yeah, I think that, I mean, I just, just to say no music, it's, you know.
Yeah, I agree.
So I think if we can get some clarification, because I could see where a DJ or, you know, bringing in speakers, that could possibly disturb the peace. But there being music that's playing just so it doesn't sound like dead air, you know, should be permissible in my opinion.
So I wanted to go ahead and move over to the Gold Room. So some of these items are, is the same that's been adopted in this term, you know, we did.
You know, we just went ahead and just, um, transferred them over. The usage hours, um, we have, uh, changed. So from Monday through Thursday, um, it will be, um, events from nine AM to ten PM. Friday and Saturday, nine to twelve AM and Sunday from nine to ten, um, PM. With the capacity is, um, two fifty, however, depending on the, um, the setup of the, the room. Can change. Also, um, the, for the furniture and fixtures, it's the same thing. As the, um, as the community center, we, um, we put the additional items here. Um, and we're also working on getting, um, new items as well. Um, again, we need the final count two weeks, um, prior. Um, and then, uh, the renter must, um, submit, um, final doc, um, the prices. Uh, their, their, uh, final, um, payment thirty days prior. Final count, count two weeks, uh, before the event. And again, the, you know, for the same day, um, changes, there is a fee for that. So, go ahead.
I do have a question. Uh, looking at the gratis and the discount, I think, uh, number one, where it says nonprofit and they're entitled to a reduced rate. That makes sense. The last part, it says, and a gratis application has been approved by the city council. Why do we need to approve a published discounted rate? Because it's not gratis. The gratis ones, I don't necessarily agree that we need to approve them all either, but at least for the nonprofit where it says. Uh, they're eligible for reduced rates, which means they're paying, it's just not, it's not gratis. Why do we need to?
I don't think, maybe that was a miss, um.
Okay.
But I believe that only goes through, um, myself and the Beverly.
Okay, so I would make sure that that's clear and make sure that those rates are, are published. And then on the, the gratis, are we saying that the only? It can only go to a nonprofit or an individual?
So for, from, from what I've, from the gratis, I, I'm only adopting oh, just, just what was, was before. So I believe is, um, the state, um, hold on one second. Anyone that was like that, um, city officials, um, had, um, had the right. So, um, only city officials, um, can only get that. Can waive that, can get the waive, well, can, um, be waived for that.
Okay, yes, because I think that the individual piece kind of makes it seem like it could be any person who requests gratis. And I don't know that that's what we're saying.
Also, I believe that Glen, like the Glen Arden organizations can get gratis as well.
Right, um, but a nonprofit, like a government is not considered a nonprofit. They're, they're, a nonprofit is like a, a private organization that's not. So I just want to make sure if we're saying other government officials outside of the city can use it as well, that that's, that's clear. Or more clear.
Okay, that's fine, I'll look at that.
And do we, I feel like we voted on this and we talked about it, but I'm not exactly sure, so correct me if I'm wrong. I just don't know why we have to approve every gratis application. If, if they've applied, if the terms are saying that it can be waived up to one time per year. If they're requesting it and it's the one time per year. And that's why I guess I'm getting at, can we specify who's eligible to get gratis, so it's not so subjective?
I mean, we're getting the application, we're getting the letter, it can go from between myself and the event manager. From what I was told, I, if the, the council's supposed to approve it. However, that can be changed to just the event manager and the city manager.
Ms. Bun?
But I mean, I'm down, I put, um, something in place where I'm keeping track of everyone that does, you know, get, get approved. So I will know, um, you know, if you got it before or whatever.
Yeah, I guess I just, um, and I know it may just be, be my own style of leadership. Like I feel like we should empower people to do what they're good at and escalations. You know, like if someone's coming for a second gratis, some, some extenuating circumstance then. But if there is like stipulations to say this is what, if you have this and this, and this criteria met, then you are eligible for one time. But just trying to reduce the number of things that have to come to us for approval.
Yeah, Ms. Bun, if I may, one of the things, like sticking to that gratis section. I recall that we had, um, this is pre you, of course. The part that says nonprofit organization, we specified that it had to be a Glen Arden, um, nonprofit organization. Given that we're in the DMV and any, we don't, we don't want every single nonprofit to come here. And we won't be making any form of revenue at all. And I see the part about individual, we already kind of talked about that. But again, we have a lot of citizens here as well. So if we're going to be having this in here, I could see this opening up a can of worms for.
Glen Arden organizations?
Well, we can say Glen Arden nonprofits, right? Now, still think where it says gratis, gratis is waived, is a waived rental fee, blah, 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 that is granted to a Glen Arden nonprofit organization. Or if we say, the part where it says individual. That can be problematic.
Okay.
That's where it could be, I think this, that part right there, um, is the part where I can see it being brought to the council or being brought to somebody. For cer- certain circumstances, but to leave it open ended like that. Over six thousand residents can come here and say like, well, it says it in here.
Exactly, so that's why I was, you know, getting at, like, let's be specific about who. Like if we mean former elected officials or if we mean government officials, like all of those, whoever those people are.
Gotcha.
So there's not subjective.
So, so where, so it could even read like, because that part can be brought to the council. So it's, it could be, it could be read as gratis is a waived rental fee for use of the gold room that is granted to a Glen Arden nonprofit organization. Period. All grad, all in, um, all gratis applications for individuals. Or for individual Glen Arden residents are reviewed on a case by case basis and are subject, like that part right there makes more.
Okay.
So that's when people.
So the only problem, the only problem I have with that around, around it being an individual. And reviewed on a case by case basis is then it becomes subjective.
That's true too.
And it, and it can, you know, somebody could be like, well, you, why did you approve them versus approving us? And that's why I'm trying, like, can we just say? Like it's, who are the specific individuals we're talking about? So then it's not. You know, so that it's not like. Just, you know, I'm friends with somebody, give it to me, you know, for free. It's okay, it's specific types of individuals that can get it.
With the elected officials, then in the twenty fourth legislative district, if we want to, like, we offer Senator Benson gratis and, um. Some of the other delegates, state delegates, uh, Glenn Ivy, who is our congressman and Jolene Ivy, who is our representative for our area. How would we word it for those folks?
Yeah, that's what I was saying, like, I would say elected officials outside of the city of Glen Arden, right? Because I would list city of Glen Arden elected officials, although, no, I would take us out. Because we're not limited to one time, because if we're having an event in our capacity as a Glen Arden. City council member.
Right.
It's, it's not our event, right? It's like.
It's a city event.
It's a city event, so we're not limited to the gratis on that. It's more what you've just described, like Senator Benson using the room or others using the room who are not.
But, but I want to challenge you there for a second, where, just on the city, the current city council part, right? Where if I'm looking at number five and I'm seeing former city count, former city council people can have the gold, can have gratis for the gold room. Right, is this what we're saying?
Well, I feel like, yeah, sorry.
No, I mean, if that's what we're saying, right? Then myself now, I, in my personal capacity would want the same thing, not just as a city. Like, of course, if it's a, if as a city council member, if I'm doing an event, it's for the city, regardless of how I look at it, right? But if I'm look, if I'm coming here as Kat Gail Dullamar wants to hold an event, wants to renew her vows here. And I get that one time, like the same way the former city council members, I feel like that should be something that's in there. And I believe we discussed that before and I think, I don't know if it was Councilman Herring or whatever, this was the last time we stayed on the phone. And it was like, well, you shouldn't have asked, and I said that, well, I paid to use this event and it was open for the city, but I used it. And that's when he said, well, you shouldn't have done that.
So I agree with you on that. So we need to clarify that, because the, the gratis is, and that's why I was saying, when we have a, a city event, that's not considered a gratis thing. But it would be to Councilwoman Gilam's point, a gratis event if one of us had an event. Right, like I had my father's re- memorial service, right? So that was like my one.
Exactly.
My one gratis for twenty twenty-three. So that makes sense. On point five though, I think the second part of the sentence, the end part, it, it doesn't match. Because it says, or for an elected official to hold a meeting of public interest. And that's not really, that's not related to former city council. I think that's like another point, which is what we're talking about when we're holding events here. And then we have to figure out, who do we mean as the elected official? Are we talking about city elected officials? Or if Glenn Ivy wanted to come here and host twenty-fourth district? Right, if they wanted to come here and host something, is that gratis? Or is that just a permissible use of the city's space because it's for the public interest of our citizens?
Well, before it was like, it was only, when Anthony Brown came, when he was the, the rep, rep for our congressman. It was only for informational purposes to the citizens.
Right.
And it was like during the Saturday afternoon, like maybe ten to two on a Saturday. It was not prime hours or anything like that. But it was only for informational purposes. If Senator Benson wanted to come and do informational purposes, we want to have a meeting, we need a place to meet, to talk about that. That all the citizens can come to, you know. But it's for them to have a fundraiser, uh, uh, for their, uh, particular, uh, position. I think that would be, uh, they would have to, uh, pay for that.
Yeah, and I actually think they have to pay for it by law anyway, I don't think we're allowed to give it to them for, for free, if it's for a fundraiser, so. I don't know if that would, but I think the point is we can, we should specify. Who can get it for free, what the, what the criteria are for that? Just so that it's not subjective.
And can I elect someone to speak to in reference to going to get that correct information?
I guess since I have so much to say about it. I can help you with that.
Non Glen Arden resident. One time per year.
For fun, yeah, that's. What's wrong, say that again?
Number four.
This is what, what was in the, this is in place. So I only, you know, just did what was in place.
Just like, um, like right now, we have a, a former, um, mayor, council. He lives in Georgia and, you know, they're trying to, of course, you've probably been in contact. Um, those are the type of things, they want a gratis. We had like mayor, um, former mayor, councilman, uh, Ruben Reed. He hadn't been in office in years, but you know, his family wanted to have a memorial here. So things like that, gratis, it should not be denied. But, um, as far as, again, citizens, all citizens, um, having gratis, it should be a limited, um, list.
Yeah.
A very limited list. Because even with the citizens, um, don't the citizens get, um, a certain percentage?
Twenty percent.
Yeah, is it twenty? I thought it was thirty.
Twenty percent.
Needs to be thirty.
Okay, so what I'll do is I'll, I'll draft something up, I'll send it to the rest of the council for comment and then I'll share it with you. Thank you.
I'm sorry, so what are we doing?
Y'all aren't doing anything while waiting for my email to come.
Okay, so let me just say this. So, so the nonprofit, number one, I think that the reduced rate should be defined. It shouldn't just be open to just reduced rates.
Yeah.
It should be a set number. I agree with, um. I agree with in number two, after you say Glen Arden nonprofit organizations, that should be it. Nobody else. And, yeah, we're scratching out number four. And yeah, so I agree with the former city council members and former and current city council members. Being able to get gratis, uh, once a year.
Okay. And it's only going through, I just wanted to make sure that it will only go through myself and the event, um, the city manager? Or you guys still wanted to?
No, once.
I mean, that would include the mayor too.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Former ma- former, you said forty, uh, former city council, former elected officials.
Yeah, former elected officials. And so, uh, once Councilwoman Reed sent it to the council, agree on it, then I think it, it could stay with you and, and them. Unless there's extenuating circumstances or special cases where you want to bring it towards.
Yeah, I'm, I'm doing the, the whole, the whole discount section.
Reason why the council, because we are, when you look at even the flow chart, we are, the, the gold room is on the side of our.
Yeah.
Because it has something to do with funds and we as council has, uh, to do with funds, we should be included.
Yeah, but if we hire people that.
No, I disagree.
I'll write it, well, y'all can disagree or agree on what I send over. We'll do it in a word so everyone could have it.
You got that?
Yeah.
All right, so let's go move on to, um, catering for the gold room.
Excuse me, did we take number four out?
Yes. We're, and that is on page nine. All right. So, um, with all of the caterers, they must comply with the catering procedures and rules and regulations. I'm set forth for the city of Glen Arden, um, in the health department. Um, so catering service options, renters may select a caterer of their choice, um, to provide catering services to their scheduled event. Again, we do have onsite, we have, um, on the website, we have, um, preferred vendors list where you guys can, uh, clients can go. And, uh, utilize them or they can also u- um, u- use, um, someone for their self. If, this will have to be a licensed and insured caterer. And again, I will need their documentation within thirty days. Required documents, so valid business license, um, the health department inspection certificate, um, the safe serve. And then also, uh, the certificate of insurance. Um, on top of that, um, the client and the renter, um, the caterer will have to sign the, uh, usage, um, agreement. And then also the, um, the catering contract, I'm sorry, and then the liability waiver form. Any questions with that? Okay, so with, um, alcohol, also let's jump back. So like if they have, um, let's say if they didn't want to, they wanted to provide the, um, Asardis or, um, someone like that. They will have to, again, have the certificate of insurance to cover, um, for any damages. Um, alcohol, um, now, um, again, you will need a licensed bartender, uh, to be here. And then, um, you would need security, the current security company that we have right now is sixty dollars per hour per officer. And now again, that would be determined by, um, by the amount of guests that you have. All right. Any questions with that?
So going back to the Sardi's, the liability stuff for Sardi's, you're saying, what did, what did you, can you repeat what you said?
That was just an example, if say, say if someone just wanted to bring in food.
Yes.
Not home cooked food, but food from, um, from a company. Then they will, um, the client will have to provide the certificate of insurance.
And what, what would that look like, like what would the certificate?
So they, um, so it's just a, um, it will, they will go to event, um, helper and apply for the one day insurance.
Okay, and does it, oh, is it a quick turnaround or?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
That actually is the same day.
Do you know the costs associated with that?
It depends on like what's all in, what they're covering. And then it, that varies.
So for a million dollar policy, is there?
It can be like forty and up. Depending on what they're covering.
Are we gonna outline what should be covered?
I, I could put it in there, yes, I could do that.
So people don't pay more than what they need to just? Or, or, yeah, don't get enough of what they need.
So alcohol, um, for ticketed events, ticketed events with alcohol must have a, um, they must have a, um, drink ticket system. So, um, this is in reference to like, um, a nonprofit only, basically. Um, so, or someone that's, um, doing tickets online, or, um, so they will have to, um, have their drink ticket system online as well. We cannot accept any cash here, like through Cash App, the bartender can't take Cash App, PayPal, none of that, because I've tried, I've seen it, where they tried to do it. So we cannot allow, um, allow them to do that, um, everything have to be done online.
Okay, sorry, it looks like we're missing the piece around the requirement for security.
Okay, I can go back.
We need to make sure we put that in there. And do they, are they required to use the security that?
Yes, okay. Again, now, um, it's still the same with music and entertainment, um, the same with smoking, um, on the premises. And so now we're moving into prices. So.
I'm sorry, sorry, on the music, do we still have that restriction around go-go bands?
So R and B bands, um, are allowed, but no, uh, go-go bands.
Okay, can we make sure that's in the contract?
Neo-soul.
But we can play go-go, we just can't have go-go bands?
What about rock bands?
Rock bands?
I mean, because it sounds like we get really specific saying neo-soul.
I guess, yes.
I mean, I would think a heavy metal band would bring just as much trouble as a go-go band.
I think you could play, I think the thing was, you can play go-go music, you can't have a go-go band, I think that's what it was.
So like a DJ can play a go-go music?
Yeah, I get that, but it's just live bands, like. Because it does seem like we always saying that go-go bands bring trouble.
Yeah, we could get it, probably get in trouble, we don't allow a rock band to play in.
So you could have a, a live R and B, uh, band, or no live bands?
No, live bands, yes.
Bands is fine. But there's no go-go band.
But a rock band would be fun, like a heavy metal.
I don't, I don't think so, but. We haven't came across enough like that before.
I mean, the demographics are changing.
What do you do when a live band, who, you know, just here, playing music, and they decide to do a go-go number?
I mean, that sound, this just sounds crazy to me, I know I said that before.
Well, there are some R and B bands that play go-go music. There are some.
What are your thoughts? So it's, it's specific to the designated go-go bands? Okay, so that if I had a wedding party here, and I had a live band, and they played, you know, they just were singing songs and then put some chuckle, we're fine?
I guess I'm, what I'm just emphasizing is that there are other types of music which, which also bring crowds that would be less than desirable, and we're not calling them out.
How often do we get heavy metal bands?
The demographics of Prince George's County and the city of Glen Arden are changing.
So we can make a note of that, no heavy van, heavy metal, and then go-go bands.
After that ordinance, it was because of the issues that were, they were getting behind go-go, because that was a big thing in Prince George's County.
But we know that every ordinance is not well thought out. We know that certain things are narrowly, uh, you know, addressing narrow issues.
Well, it addressed the issue at the time, that's what they do, they address the issue at the time, and now that times have changed, there's been no update, is the stain thing is still on the books.
So, um, going to the prices, the rental prices for the go-room. So for the security deposit, we're gonna go up a little bit. Um, so for non, well, let me just go back a little bit, because I don't know if we went through that. So non, non-prime time, uh, consists of the Monday through Thursday, um, nine AM to ten PM, and Friday, nine AM to four PM. Um, so that's non-prime time. So with the security deposit, um, it's five hundred dollars. Prime time is seven hundred dollars, and ticketed events will be eight hundred dollars. So for the prices, um, so Monday through Thursday, nine AM to ten PM, it will be one seventy-five per hour. Um, any overtime fee will be two fifty. For, and that's for Glen Arden residents. And then non-residents will be two twenty-five, and for overtime fee will be three hundred dollars. Fridays will be two twenty-five per hour, overtime fee two sixty-five. The non-residents, two seventy-five per hour, overtime fee three fif- three fifteen. So discounted flat rates, the, these are the, um, the, um, categories that will receive a discount. Nonprofit organizations, city of Glen Arden employees, PG elected officials. Uh, their prices will be one twenty-five per hour, and the overtime fee will be two fifty. And then, um, if they're non-residents, one fifty per hour, overtime is, um, two fifty. So going through the prime time. Go ahead.
On the discounted rates, where you have the nonprofit organization, should Glen Arden be there, or do you say, F, any nonprofit?
City of Glen Arden employees.
Nonprofit organizations.
Oh, we can put them there. The Glen Arden nonprofit organizations was for the gratis.
Uh, discounted rate, yeah.
So discounted rate is available to all nonprofits. The gratis option is only for Glen Arden nonprofits.
Could you repeat the last part about, um, elected officials?
So PG elected officials?
Yeah, where's?
It says PGC elected officials, and it probably should just say, like, just elected officials, because it's gonna be outside, we have.
The people outside of.
Yeah, District Twenty-four is not Prince George's County, and neither is the, um, our, our senators or, um, congressmen.
Questions?
So I see the, um, discounted rate for non-prime time. What if, um, for example, I wanted it for prime time, is there a rate associated with that?
For, you said for prime time? Only you will get those rates through prime time only. I mean, non-prime time, I'm sorry.
So if I wanted a prime time?
You will, you will step into these rates down here.
Unless I have a gratis.
Correct. All right, so prime time, this is Friday evenings, five PM to twelve AM. Um, it's twenty-one hundred for seven hours. Uh, this inclu- this is inclusive of your setup and breakdown, three hundred dollar additional for any overtime. Um, twenty-one fifty for seven hours for the non-resident. Okay, Saturdays during the day from nine AM to four PM, it's twenty-two seventy-five for seven hours. The three twenty-five additional, uh, for the one-hour overtime fee. And then twenty-four ninety-nine for seven hours, three fifty-seven additional. Saturday evenings, five PM to twelve AM, will be twenty-six twenty-five for seven hours, three seventy-five additional. And then the non-residents will be twenty-eight fifty. So you have that option now for a buyout, which is up to ten hours. Um, again, the event have to, um, end at twelve AM. Um, forty-five for ten hours, four fifty additional, and then five thousand for non-residents. And then our Sunday events will be twenty-one hundred, and then, uh, twenty-one fifty for non-residents.
I have a question, when it has the hours there, are we saying that they have to rent it for a full seven hours?
They only get it for seven hours.
But what if they only wanted it to do it for three hours? Is that not an option during the prime time?
No, not for the prime time. Um, and then, um, that's inclusive of their setup and breakdown as well. Bless you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
So repass services. Um, and, um, repasses will be a max of four hours. The security deposit is two hundred dollars, and then, um, we'll, we're going up to a hundred dollars per hour. Um, I didn't put memorial services here, I think that needs to fall under, um, regular events. I've seen it where memorial services was an actual event. So that needs to fall under the, um, either the non-prime time or, um, prime time event, um, prices.
You think so? Apart from a repass?
It's a party.
What's the price in history that you know of for a repass? Has it always been a hundred dollars?
No, it's eighty-five currently, eighty-five dollars per hour for, and the max is four hours.
So, so what do you see as the most notable difference between a repass and a memorial?
That, that the difference is, is a, it's a whole service, like, party. There has been people, there had a band, a, a DJ, um, they had food, it's actual, it's an actual party. And I've seen people that stayed long, they damaged stuff, and it's not with that, with that fee, with the repass fee, it's not.
But I guess I'm wondering, is that typical? Like, I've been to lots of memorials in my life, and they, I've never been to one that was like a party. So I'm trying, I don't want us to make a rule based on something that's an accept, like, that doesn't, is not the standard.
So from the majority, the, the majority ones has been here, that it's been that way.
Or, sorry, I was gonna, just to go on it, can we restrict or define what a memorial is, so that it's, it's not a party? If, if they're bringing a DJ, then we say, okay, this is no longer a memorial, this is now a party?
But that's the way that they're expressing how they want to, um, memorialize their, their, their disease.
Yeah, I, I, I understand what you're saying. It is, I understand where Councilwoman Fareed is coming from, and it's just kind of this gray area of, okay, well, I can just say it's a memorial service to get.
Yeah, and then they do the.
And then get the whole shebang.
Right, and that's why I'm saying if we say, okay, these are the terms of agreement for what a memorial service is, if you now try to bring in a live band, this is no longer a memorial service.
But I also understand, so I understand where you're coming from. But I also understand that if the majority of, you know, the actuals that have actu- that have happened, you know, the majority of memorial services has come through Glen Arden, have been an event, not, you know, a rep- a somber repass.
Well, that's probably because we had a memorial discount rate, and they wanted to have a party.
Have we had a memorial discount rate?
No. I've had one, the, well, I, I'm actually started to charge them the fifteen, the, the prices as a regular rent. Uh, rental rent. Because of issues that was happening with just the repass, um, fee. Only fifty dollars to recoup for the security deposit, and they left trash. They, the kitchen was a mess, um, damages, I couldn't, I can't recoup anything with fifty dollars.
I see where you're coming from.
You were at my dad's memorial, it wasn't a party.
A lot of times it turns into a, when there's a young person that has died. Sometimes people, you know, depending on.
It is cultural, it could be cultural.
So, so how, so could we just think of how we can bridge that gap, right? So you take one more service for, uh, Councilwoman Fareed's father. We came, we talked about his life, there were remarks, it was not a DJ. I don't even think there was food, was there? There was food. Um, but it was more so on a, on the level of, oh. It was more so on a level of a repass in that category. And so if we just think about how, if there are ways that we could bridge that gap, um, to where maybe we do put stipulations, stipulations in there, to where maybe a stipulation's on the repass side, like, hey, um, anything that, you know, does not, I mean, repasses cannot have DJs or anything like that. So if there's an actual rational memorial that fits into that category, then they can get the repass rate as opposed to getting the.
Yeah, and I ask questions when they do come in, I do ask them questions, but when it's, when it's a whole shebang, then that's when it goes to.
And that's what I'm getting at, like, what they have, because I just, you know, it's a time of grieving for people. You know, just want to be sensitive to that, to like, not be like, well, you gotta pay fifteen hun- you know, whatever.
And I think it's good, you, I mean, you asked all these questions, so you have the sermon of whether it's gonna be a full-out party or. Uh, and the, the other question I had was, um, so how does our repass rate stack up against, you know, standard? When you say low, what's the comparisons?
Um, so let's take a look at that. Um, I have, um, prices in here from other venues. I don't know if we put the repass ones in here or not. Um, but, yeah, they're, they're, um, even at church, some churches, and, and luckily, we're, um, First Baptist, I've established a rapport with, uh, First Baptist of Glen Arden, where they're, they're spending all, like, since, all of their here. But, um, and then some other churches in the area as well, but, um, even some of the churches that started to have, they're higher, um, than, than us. And when, even when the clients call, they were like, okay, that's, that's a great price, because they know that, that this is the cheapest around.
And can repass happen, hold on, man, I didn't read it. Uh, repass, uh.
And that's why I didn't want to go up too high, but I do think that it needs to be some type of increase with that. I mean, that, I, and I don't want to go that, but I think that's kind of ripping off people, especially when they're, they're in need, or, you know, going through something, but I do think we need some type of increase.
Okay, and repass cannot be during prime time?
Yes, it can. And this is, this is their standard fee, this that, any time of the day, that, that's their price.
So, so if I want a repass during prime time, then I pay prime time members?
That's what you're gonna, no, 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 you're paying that price for under repass. That's the flat fee for a repass, any time of the day. So with Monday through Thursday, Monday through Friday, even the weekends, that will be their price, set price.
Monday through Friday, so they can't have it on a Saturday?
Even on the weekends, that is their set price. And the only reason why I did that, because I know that people are grieving, and I know that they're going through something, and that, that will be their set price.
I do, um, just.
I don't disagree. I'm trying to like. I'm not trying to sound cold-hearted or anything like that, but I'm trying to look at it from a business perspective, right? What if our business just becomes repass? Where, you know, because people are booking repass during these primetimes, now we cannot charge, we cannot charge the, the prime time rates for regular events. And so if we did that, then we wouldn't get anywhere. We, we wouldn't get out of the, the hole that we're in from a Gogo perspective. And, and so how do we, humanly and, you know, so from a business perspective, solve that issue?
Well, here's what I see as the difference. When you have an event that's gonna take that prime time space, it's unlikely that they're gonna call you on Monday and say, I need to use it on Saturday. They would have planned it far in advance. So a repass, though, will be like that, because you never know when someone's gonna pass away. So if it's, if the person passed away on the weekend, and you're having it the following weekend, if it's not available, then it's not available. But it's not necessarily, in my opinion, going to preclude us from having an event, because if there was gonna be an event in that short period of time, it probably would have already been booked.
Yeah, the majority of the repasses, they call like a week or two before, which I already know, you know, have events, I would know what my calendar is at that time.
Good point. Thank you.
So I want to go back real quick again, so it probably was stated, but just in case it wasn't. So up top, where it says Gold Room, it says Reno instead of rental. So the T, the T, the T is missing. And when we talk about repass, Ms. Bun and Camille, do we, do we get, because I know what you and Councilwoman Farid were initially discussing back and forth, like, how do we know if someone's not just trying to get that discount to then throw a bash or something? Do we get, like, copies of death certificates or things of that nature to verify that there really is somebody who passed away? That may be some way to get around that. The reason why I'm also saying that as a part one to my part two is, I can pull up my grandmother's memorial service that we did for her right now, and we're cultural, like, I'm Afro-Latina and Caribbean, and we, after we did the whole service and cried and stuff, we started dancing, because that's what she was known for, dancing, and we celebrated her. And if you were coming from the outside, not knowing, and you came later on, you'd think, these people are throwing a party, but you'll see a big picture of my grandmother in the background, not knowing that earlier on in the day, we were sharing remarks about her and celebrating her life. So, again, thinking about, maybe we get copies of their death certificate. I know I was able to get one when she passed away for several things, so that may be something along the way to think about. The second thing.
Sorry, death certificate is gonna take a long time.
Sorry, a program.
Maybe we can do a bit of worry, but.
That, then as to her point, then does that become a memorial service? Because it's cultural, right? You're gonna be dancing, gonna have some music and stuff like that. So that lends itself to what we discussed earlier about how do we differentiate between something like that, which is normal from an Afro-Latina, Caribbean perspective repass, versus what we traditionally would view as a repass as very solemn and quiet and we don't do anything.
And that's where, someone going back to the Gogo conversation, the Rock conversation, is this is diverse community. So when we say what's normal, repass, normal to whom?
So was there a deep, because I guess when I'm thinking about it, I'm not necessarily thinking that a memorial needs to preclude any type of celebration. But I guess when, it's how organized is this celebration? Like, to the point we're making around a repass or a memorial, it's usually because somebody passed away in a relatively short period of time. If they're booking, how far in advance are they booking it? You know, like, what, are they bringing in a DJ? I don't know if a DJ was involved.
It was, because we knew my grandmother.
Well, I've had some where someone passed away, I think it was just the one previous to this, this, the beginning of this month. They, their husband passed away a while ago, and they wanted to do, like, a memorial service for them. So it, in some cases, it's not like, you know, they don't pass away like right then and there. They want to come back and just, you know, do something for them, to just remember them. So, you know, we get those too. And then that's where the party comes in, because, you know.
And I, and I have, one of our closest friends unfortunately had passed away of cancer a few years back. And, but while she was transitioning, knowing that her time was limited on earth, she was very clear with her instructions as far as when you, when, after the service, I don't want anybody crying for me, I don't want anybody, like, to celebrate, party, and so that's what we did. But it was general, it was literally how we celebrated her. So that's, again, that's where I'm like, if there's a way to justify, to show that the person passed away, whether it's a, I kept seeing death, I kept seeing death certificate, that's what I mean, it's a program, sorry. Yeah, tho- those type of things, that's what, that's what I, because I, I hear you guys as well, like, you don't want somebody taking advantage of something that's well-intended for something else.
And I've actually, oh, sorry.
I've learned that in the recent years, that, I mean, for one, to me, a memorial and a repass are different. And then also, people do not even have funerals like they used to. Some people, they'll come and tell you right now, this is not a funeral, we're gonna praise the Lord, we're gonna dance, we're gonna do this and do that. Then you go to another funeral, and they're quiet, and you could, you know, it's like, the people are not even moving. And so, in my opinion, I guess we just, like what Councilwoman Gillen said, maybe have some, kind of document or something, but I do not believe that we should be able to dictate how somebody is going to mourn, because that particular person that may have passed could be a seventeen-year-old that was into music, and, you know, and this, they was honoring that person for that. The same way we can't, you know, I think that's getting a little too restricted, restricted. And again, that we can have, you know, rules, and standard rules and regulations, like, you're not gonna have a Gogo band, or you're not gonna do this or that. But, I mean, who's to say that if somebody may have a repass, and they have, they say a lot, some people come up and might say stuff, or they might just eat and don't say anything, they may have a violinist. So that's, that's acceptable, but somebody can't dance. So I think it's just getting too picky at this point, because you cannot tell people how they, like I said, it could be cultural, it could be whatever, age-wise and so forth. So we just should have standard rules about, you know, what you can and cannot do, whether it's from the home-cooked meals to Gogo bands and stuff like that. But I think it, I would be offended.
To the restriction on time, right?
You know, I mean, and then.
To the restriction on time.
Yeah, all of that, just the basics, but not to be able to say, you know, if you're having a repass, you can't dance. Or if you, you know, if somebody say, well, we having a repass, and if they say, well, I'll, then our culture, we dance. And then all of a sudden, but it's an actual repass, then you can't say, well, then, no, you need to go to the events. I mean, it's not a repass anymore. I don't think that because somebody dances, or somebody sings a solo, or that it should be then taken into another category, because you can't tell people how to mourn.
I agree, and I think this started because there was, a suggestion was being made to take memorial out altogether as a type of category. Can we just, can we just leave memorial in as a category? Or are you saying no?
I think we need to separate the two.
And that's what I'm saying, they are separate, I can mean.
Separate, so between what? Yeah, 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 but memorial would be its own category, not that it's repass and then just a party. There is a category for memorial. And I wanted to, I think it was you, Derek, that was asking about the rates. What if we kept the rate at a hundred dollars for Glen Arden residents, and then made it a higher rate for non-Glen Arden residents for the repass? If you're concerned about it being too low?
I don't think so.
No, I'd have to agree with you.
I think his, and maybe I'm wrong, but you were saying to up it, right?
Yeah, yeah, that's one thing, to increase it for non-Glen Arden residents. The rate would be higher for, if you're a non-Glen Arden resident for a repass.
One standard rate.
I got a question. Speaking of repass and so forth, in security, for example, I mean, your, your security, I think, capital rights, company, they handle events and so forth. So for repass, for example, what we have is June now, okay? Parents still here, it's, it was anticipated that it might be some people showing up that are not supposed to show up. So how your covenant with your security company that you hired for, like, they hired during the daytime to for a repass that might have problems?
Yeah, so what I do is just, once I get the rental agreement signed, I automatically give them a call and let them know, this is what I'm expecting, that, you know, there could be alcohol or, you know, whatever, but the client is paying for the, the fee, so they'll, they'll know ahead of time that there will be security on site as well.
So in the instance, like, they was talking about earlier, you said they can't dance, and it's just our culture. They stop dancing, and then, then we got problems, how that work?
Well, I think that that's part of what the, you know, the agreements and stuff. I typically go all, over all of that, once, when signing the rental agreements of, like, the do's and the don'ts. Are you saying, like, if something just happens to, occurred during the day, then I would just have to reach out to, you know, that company to come out or, or something like that, if something was to happen. But that can be within, you know, that can just happen, yeah.
Okay, so want to do a couple things. One, a time check of, you know, how much more time do you think you need for the presentation?
We are almost done.
Okay. And then the second piece was, and not that we could do this now, but if we're going to increase the repass amount, which I think that we should, have it based on, like, a legitimate analysis, of what about, what are our costs? What does it cost to staff repass? And do, you know, do that type of analysis to justify us going to where, wherever we want to go with it. We're not going too high, but we don't want to be, we don't want to be so low that we're not breaking even or barely breaking even. Because at the end of the day, this is business, so you want to be able to, you know, bring in, have a bottom line so you can reinvest in the business.
And, and I will, I will just say that that will be for memorial services, that we, we will need to just add that cost to.
Okay.
Ms. Bun and Camille, question on the repass, and then, well, let me ask these questions first. As far as the rates and all that stuff, right? Like, knowing that the conditions of how the Gogo is right now, like, this is considered like pre-renovation or pre-whatever you want to call it, right? First of all, I wish citizens or whoever's watching, whoever's watching could see how beautiful you guys, you ladies did this, so.
Nicely done.
Very nice, very, very nice, especially the chairs. You know, the higher the chairs, but if we are going to, when are we thinking about as far as implementation of increases? Because if we are still giving people what they would have been getting yesterday, then how do we justify an increase, right? I know we, we need money to do the work, but again, how do we justify it, right? So that's one, again, I, I have no right or wrong. For me, there's no right or wrong answer right now that I can think of, so that's one, the implementation part. The second part is, as we're talking about, like, the repass and memorial, or the, yeah, really those, I know that, unless I missed it, but in the prior sections of the presentation, what we talked about, we have to give thirty days notice, we have to give thirty days notice, we have to give sixty, you know, like, things like that. How would they be able to do that? Like, is, can there be a disclaimer or some, unless, given these circumstances, you need to provide X, Y, and Z deposit about thirty days?
So my, my hope, once we get a HoneyBook, we already have HoneyBook, it's just a matter of getting all of this approved, and then once it's approved, we can get it up and running on HoneyBook, and once that's done, we'll start sending everything out. My, my thoughts is, we can start spring with the new prices. That'll make sure that we'll have all of every, like, the wording, all of that correct, and then we'll have HoneyBook together, and then that will, we can just start running from there.
Okay. You have a quick question. I wanted to, and this is probably, this could be a part to, another day conversation, but I'm interested in hearing how we classify, why we class ourselves, classify ourselves as a banquet hall. That has been a point of, we do not.
I, I don't know.
Oh, you do not? Okay, yeah, it should, it shouldn't be banquet hall, at all, in the research that we've done. And also, this is something that I, I want to continue the conversation. I want to go in record and say that, with the exception of one time, I always have cater, I, I get my things catered because I just don't like the labor of cooking for my stuff. But I do want to go back, not right now, to the liability disclaimer stuff, because I, I need to understand how some, like, Prince George's County allows certain places to have people come in with food and sign a waiver, and how we are saying different. Again, if, if it's the law of the law, I don't mind that, but I can list, like, several places and provide links, and I'm like, why is it this way and not that way? They're in Prince George's County, they're in Upper Marlboro, they're around here. So just, just want some context, so when we get calls, we can actually respond to that. And that was one of the things that I had pushed for when, prior to you coming, like, hey, there are people who are not in my situation, where I have caterers readily available.
Okay, yeah.
I'll be quiet now.
So I just wanted to go back, because it's, it's not sitting well with me about the repass cost and raising that. It's already, in my opinion, it's four hundred dollars, right? If you do it for four hours, that's four hundred dollars. Like, the cost of burying someone is so high. And yes, we are a business, but we're also a city government, and we should be able to provide some sort of concession for our residents, particularly given the fact that we have an aging community. And when we think about who will likely want to reach out to us to have a repass, that we're asking, we would ask them to pay more than four hundred dollars and get a caterer. That's a lot of money for someone to do, which is, you know, I understand, you know, trying to balance the costs, and which is why my recommendation would be, we keep this cost at what it is for Glen Arden residents, and anybody outside of the city would pay more, because as you mentioned, they're coming from other places where they're looking at fifteen hundred dollars. So anything less than that is gonna be better for them. But I don't, I don't want to make this a situation where people in Glen Arden can't even celebrate and memorialize their loved ones who were born and raised in Glen Arden, because they can't afford the cost of being able to host a repass here.
So I, I can even agree to that, and so my, my point was to base it on numbers, right? So can anyone here say that four hundred dollars covers the full cost to host a repass? I've seen no number to support that. So if in maintaining this enterprise, we have to have some type of revenue to maintain it. So if we do the analysis, and it turns out that, man, it actually costs us six hundred dollars to, to host a repass, well, the four hundred dollars isn't worth it, it's to put us in a hole.
When, I'm sorry, when you say our cost to host it, what does, what do you mean, the hourly rate of the?
Security and.
I don't know all the inputs to that, it should be relative, yeah. Low, medium, or not, I, I don't know, which is why I requested that we just look into that. We staff these, these events. Do we provide the table costs, and we have to watch the table costs? All the costs that goes into this thing, because what I don't want to, what, I agree that that is a time of mourning, and that if dealing with those situations, you should be delicate. And I can also see us giving a discount to a lot of residents, which I think we already give a discount overall, so it's a lot of residents. However, in seeing more and more businesses make emotional decisions, and that business decision, it's not, I don't think that that is a sustainable model to. I don't think that that is a sustainable model to for uh enterprises to keep to go forward. So all I'm asking is that we analyze the numbers to make sure that things are priced appropriately. And and we can also balance, you know, uh what we charge our citizens. But we have to have that financial analysis to put us in the right spot. Because right now, the goal room is losing money. You can't, you cannot deny that.
And it's designated as an enterprise for the city of Glen Arden. So it's designated as an enterprise, which I have not seen that documentation yet, but I've been told uh that it's designated as an enterprise for the city of Glen Arden, then it should be, the money should be able to sustain itself, have revenue to sustain it.
That's 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 like morticians, including the offer, you know, the service, just like that. They they would be out of business if they were moving motion. They have to base it off of what is the cost, right? So it's good, yes, it's like a good.
That's not true.
It's it's like subject.
Alright.
So that's all I'm saying.
So we'll we'll go um come back and revisit um those action items. Um and then um go ahead.
One other point, could you look in your research? When you, these other places that charge more for the repass, are there more that's included? Like when I had my father's repass in New York, it included the food. So I paid a higher cost, but but I, but all, yeah, all the food was, everything was included. So if we're comparing ourselves to other places that are charging more, is that just their flat hourly rate or?
It was just hourly, they didn't have like food or anything like that. It's just they're providing like the actual location and student and everything.
Fifteen hundred dollars for four hours?
That was on the lower end.
That's a, that's absurd.
Yeah, we caught quite a few um you know, hundreds of dollars of money that stood out.
Fifteen hundred at the lower end.
The lowest. Oh, yeah, that's crazy.
For just, for just the the rental of the space, not including anything else, like I just.
And is it two hour um left?
Yeah.
So it's in and out, they don't let you stay for long?
Yeah, but I I use that as a comparison to what we're charged. And so somewhere there's a gap, but anyway, that's why, and I don't want to generalize people's business. Um but I'm just saying, I'm just advocating for a reasonable amount and based off actual numbers.
Yeah.
That could form us of where we truly.
Okay. Alright, um so we'll get tho- those um action items um completed and get those back over to you guys. Alright, so um moving forward, I want us to start closing out. Um so events for um in-house events for um two thousand twenty-four through two thousand twenty-five. Um we wanted to look in, we were looking into doing the Health and Wellness Expo, which will um actually bring in revenue um to partner with the girls and Girls on the Run um for the teenagers, teenage girls in the in the area in Glen Arden. Um we wanted to do a program for them um to come in. So it's like a mentorship program where that you're, you can actually vol- like um be like a um a volunteer for the for the city, for the area. And then they'll come in, they can do marathons, all of that, and you're actually in charge of that.
Is this um the mic for all?
I'm sorry.
Is this for an uh under administration?
This is under the goal room. This will be.
These are the events?
So they'll be, so it'll be ticketed events.
Where you sell tickets online?
Yes.
Okay.
Um and then um.
And then.
Girls on the Run, it doesn't cost um a program that we'll put together. For the for the girls in the community.
I'm sorry, can you explain what Girls on the Run is again?
So it's a mentorship program. Um so we wanted to partner with them um and then um uh um put together like if they if they can come in and do this program. They can do marathons um and um along the city and also partner with these as well. So they get together and they can also send the guests and information. But it's just a mentorship program for for the teenagers and.
But when we talk about run, we're talking about like physical running, so you're, okay.
Does that mean any organizations run on?
Yes. Yeah, that's what I mean.
Yeah, uh the the reason why is because there's actually a Health and Wellness Committee that was um established by resolution that was actually tasked with doing these types of things. Um and so it would make sense to do that, particularly the um the Girls on the Run at the time. Uh the Acting City Manager, I don't know if it was Chief O'Donnell, I know I started, no, no. Who was the guy? I forgot his name, he was there when we started.
Timothy God, Timothy, Mr. Ms. George.
George, yes.
Timothy George.
Uh we were trying to do, get a five K set up, which would actually have required collaboration with other cities because there's nowhere to run that far just through Glen Arden. Um so I would just ask that if you all are going to do those events, that they would be in conjunction with that Health and Wellness Committee.
And my my goal is to partner with others and you guys want to partner, you know, with some of these events that was part of my goal as well, too. Um bridal expo and then maybe.
Can I say I really, really, really love the bridal expo idea? And this space in like is prime for that.
Yeah.
And then also, you know, the great um John McVender.
Did you marry yet?
And and yeah, I'm just going to add on with the bridal expo. That's how I chose the venue where I had my wedding was I went to a bridal expo there. And I think that um if you're going to bring the booze and the vendors, particularly the vendors who are listed as preferred vendors here, I think that will be a great opportunity. Um and I'm sure you will decorate it lovely as you've done.
I'm just shocked that we're having a bridal expo, where's the groom expo?
Oh, you can come, it's big out there.
Again, these are going to change again because we will be starting this over. So um and again, you know, one of the budget comes out, some of this stuff will change up. But in first phase, we wanted to work on visibility, uh which is never a human science for outside. Providing you guys with um a piece of what that would actually look like, that's the package.
Oh, cool.
Will be left with tons of.
This is your um to the right hand side towards the back.
Yep.
Wonderful.
Um uh the marksman time is right for us that I have to deal with the police department. They come here thinking that this is the actual place to do get fingerprinting. So definitely as a whole, we. Then they then um go to the giving out five and like bringing out the five of years to get more modernized. Um ready to do this play, which is possibly ever the goal, the goal could possibly be considered a whole thing considering incident. Um linen, hardware, and a little updated contract. Um and then how to start the in-house of this, um maintenance improvement of the power, certain power, maintaining um now with the painting. Um I did wanted to, if you look, if that was approved, um I wanted to do that inspections because I do know that that will cost um some. But um we did get um surveys that were.
It's not turning.
But we did get um surveys that where um some of the guests, um the guests were looking for improvements. Um were looking for improvements to the room, um and that was stated. I do have a letter inside where one of the guests. It's not still not working. Um one of the guests did um mention um painting.
What what color?
I I'm I'm thinking some like white, a flat white. And then you can also do different touches with, um if you go to, go to um.
How about gray?
And that's what I was going to. So these, this is the color schemes that I was thinking about for here. So the white, um the beige, the gray and the and brown to go together for in in here. Um and it can, um you can do like focal walls or just having just a white, but also having the tones of this as well.
I I just want to say that I want us to consider the fact that there does appear to be an excess of ARPA funds and you know, considering the fact that ARPA is closely designated for revenue recovery. Um I would say that we really should consider using some of those excess funds to make the upgrades in this room so that it can be at the, you know, like I I hear what you're saying, but I don't want you to piecemeal janky style update the room. You know, like if there needs to be renovations and the room needs to be closed for a few weeks or whatever to really overhaul it, I think that would be a better, you know, path than trying to kind of carve out a little piece of budget because we have to use that, we have to use those ARPA dollars.
Yep. And I actually had someone come in, an interior designer come in, she gave me numbers, so I can show you guys those too.
Yeah.
Yep.
And I actually like that, I actually like that idea, Councilwoman Fareed, without knowing what the numbers are, let me say that. But knowing that number, we do need to get these ARPA dollars out of the door. And more more importantly, or or similarly, um in on a level of importance is unlike a lot of the other things that we have invested in right now, which are worthy things, this particular investment would basically be a return on the, there'll be a greater return on the investment with all that you presented, you and Camille have presented thus far, so.
I just talked off my other back. Some of my stuff, my ideas. So I understand that it could be the touchy subject because for our elderly citizens, uh because adults, you know, because been this way for a long time and some people are going to, you know, remember.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and and again, um s- again, um um part of my goal is, you know, we we still want to cater to our our residents here, but we also want to get, get the word out.
We like, so you mean like a rebranding?
Yes.
Well, that's what I'm saying, like I think this could stand for massive renovations, not even just from an event. Uh the events that we're talking about perspective, even from when we host events here as council members. How difficult is it even when we're trying to speak to people using the podium? You know, like the the monitor, like, you know, there are definitely upgrades that could, that this room could use that would be beneficial for many purposes. Um and we need to earmark those dollars. I think we have like a half of it. It's a lot of money left. Yeah, well, I was thinking after the the renovations for the nutritional center, we still only have like half left, like half the money left.
Yes. Okay, and so some of the um other, um the other um items is planners in the lobby. Um uh modernized furniture uh in the lobby, hardwood floors um in here. Um.
Keep going. Yeah, because.
Um because yes, it it costs a lot of money just to do cleaning. And just to think about the cleaning, you know, per year, it's better just to have a, just a a a flat surface of floor and then it's easier to clean.
Can I ask, I was going to ask you, how often do you um ha- have to shampoo? Because I saw six.
So since I've been here, it's it's been twice, well, three times. One for a professional and then we actually got um in-house to to do it. But they, it's only lasts like th- what, two or three weeks? And then it's back, you know, dirty again.
Can we get the?
The carpet was a navy with had little flowers in it, there were different colors that you could have. Look down seats, but the phenomenon is that it was a royal navy that, um you know, and it was a plush carpet that gave it a more elegant look than what.
Yeah, but when you go to different menus now, they don't have carpet, they just have a flat. And it's also easier to clean, it to keep keep cleaned up too.
Yeah. Um what I was going to suggest also is to add into when you look at the renovation of the room is the bathroom?
Yes. Mm-hmm, yeah.
I was going to say too, um with the carpet, it it's really, um it's tied to certain demographics. And so I think we really want to like make it more, everyone feels inclusive when it's. Um and just to be quite frank, the carpet also has a smell.
That's what I was about to say.
As soon as we have an event, it's like the smells are there for whatever food that they had. And then you have to do a mad dash and try to like alleviate some of that smell before the next event. Really difficult to do, especially if you don't have time to shampoo all the time.
I had an idea, okay.
Personal center.
Ms. Bond, I've seen and he's got, because instead of going up there and trying to get a note at the top there and trying to get that off of you.
Yeah.
We already have somebody behind you.
Okay.
And so if you guys need, you guys need to do something, then we could add that to the uh concentration that is going to be like in the past, it's like that long, just add on to that.
Yeah.
Uh then we can either be a heavy, heavy ball.
Yep, yeah. Um. Yep. So just this, um finish, um finishing up. So podiums, landscaping, flowers, um just a, just a um landscaping for um outside. Um and then um just, I wanted to bring this to your attention. So I wanted to um do a promo um um flyer for, a winner promo flyer for um, you know, for not for Glen Arden residents or anyone that's referring a friend. Um so I do have this flyer here, I wanted to get you guys o- um approval for that, so I can get that going. Again, winter month is kind of slow, so just for marketing purposes and then just to get um other events um in here and and more income coming in, I wanted to start this so we can get more income in.
Okay.
Yes, it is.
I have to say I cheated when when it, when the packet was here and that was the first thing I saw.
Mm-hmm.
So my not council member life was beyond excited to see this.
Um and then that's it, thank you guys um for your time, um for everything.
Thank you, this is wonderful. I would like to commend you on your professionalism and the way that you presented all of this information to us. Thank you so much, well appreciated.
And 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 what I appreciate also, in addition to what Councilwoman Fareed said to both you and Camille, is I like transparency and I like people who are like, we know what we know and what we don't know, we just don't know. So sometimes people just try to talk their way into something, so I really like that. And you dealt with us and our million questions, so thank you.
Good. So before I close, I wanted to say a few things. So for some, from, for some strange reason, I feel um I was picked for this position. Of course, anyone can be hired for a job, but I believe I was positioned here at this time and place to create change. Not even change here, but to stretch myself as a leader, a coworker, a dreamer. I truly believe that this is more than a place that just holds um cabarets back in the day. Um but I believe that this is a place where we can create something new, not only for citizens of Glen Arden, but for everyone. However, um to do that, we all have to stretch ourselves a little. My goal is to make a difference in anything that I touch. And as I close today, I want to ask, um do we just want this to be a historic venue, to be talked about or discussed throughout the DMC, DMV area? Do we want to stay stagnant or try to generate new rev- um revenue, new followers, or new income? So thank you again, and I yield, and um I look forward to new beginnings. So thank you again, and I yield, and, um, I look forward to new beginnings.